There you go.
Yeah.
All right, everyone, let's get this regular city council meeting for the City of International Falls to order. If you could all join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Please note, all members of the council are present. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I don't believe we have any any additions or deletions, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve as written.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Go to the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the July fifteenth regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll move.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. We'll go to the special city council meeting of July twenty-second. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have our payments and claims. We have a resolution before you with the transfers are going to the 101 general fund in the amount of $1,317.28, and that's coming from the eight twelve lodging tax fund. Accounts payable, International Falls claims of $975,260.97, airport commission claims of $113,066.68, and airport major claims projects of $56,057.65, for a total accounts payable of $1,144,385.30. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving the payments and claims.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward that's not on the agenda? All right, there will also be an opportunity later in the meeting. We'll go down to old business. Remove from the table the approval of the 2023 audit as presented by Schlender and Winter.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion?
I would just say that, oh, we had to get an extension if I got this right, otherwise we would have been done because there were some issues with airport paperwork for our audit.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So anyways, for the for the folks that are watching online, there is definitely a piece of the the recording that is going to get cut out. There was some lewd behavior on our on our Zoom meeting, so we are going to cut that piece out of what goes into KCTV. We will not be airing that or slurping it out. No business has been conducted from the city council from our last motion, which was to remove the Schlender and Winter audit forward. So now it's before us, and I just want to hand off to the city administrator to verify that we are in a good position now with, or if we're not in a good position, to approve the annual audit.
Mayor, are you going to take a vote to remove it first completely?
I apologize, I thought we had. I guess I got a little thrown off.
Just got a first and a second. You do not have a call on that?
I apologize. So we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries. Thank you. I did get sidetracked by some things. So now that's before us. City Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Our finance officer is out of the office on vacation this week, so she did put a memo together for you. Her and I have been in contact with Ryan, our auditor, and he assured us that they were diligent in getting the final pieces to, that's the airport commission, was diligent in getting the final pieces to them upon request. They are understanding that we did have to file that extension, and that there were no material changes to the original audit that was presented to you guys at the budget and finance meeting, and the document is in front of you again, the pretty much the same document. Therefore, we are asking that you go ahead and approve that document, and we would move the appropriate information to the Office of Secretary of State's office for publication and final processing of the audit.
All right, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve the 2023 annual audit.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion?
I will reiterate again, apparently that's a little early, but maybe that's caused a problem, who knows? But I just said we had the extension because of the delay in getting the airport paperwork and financials. That's why we needed an extension, and I'm assuming they weren't just asked for that paperwork in July? Would that be safe to say?
Correct.
All right, so that's all I have to say.
All right, any other discussion on the audit? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have a, on our consent agenda, we have acknowledgement and accepted donation of Packaging Corporation of America for the International Falls Fire Department. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that check for $2,500.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Wagner.
Second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have a letter of resignation from the Housing and Redevelopment Authority from Board Member Art Holt. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that resignation.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next is consider appointment of the housing and to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board. I have received one name of someone that's interested, but I do want to open this up to everybody. So at the next council meeting, I will make an appointment, but I would like to make it open to anybody in the community that would like to serve on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board to put in an application with the city. There's applications for appointment in the office, and we will have an appointment on our next city council meeting for that. If nobody else comes forward, I do have one person that is interested, so we're able to move forward that way.
Is there a counselor on that committee?
There can't be, well, there can be a counselor, but it makes it very difficult because they meet at the same time as us. But we can change our meeting times, but yeah, that's part of the issue.
I just had that question, so.
Well, and they meet when we have our committee, the whole meeting. So I mean, it could be something that we could change our committee, the whole meeting around, so that one person could get information and bring it right back to the council, but as of right now, it wouldn't make sense. All right, next, we're doing some fun stuff. We're approving the recommendation to promote Officer Bolehle to sergeant effective August sixth, 2024. Chief, do you have anything to say about this?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you said, this is my recommendation for our final sergeant that we need. We've talked before about how we try to have a sergeant on each shift, 24 hours a day, and Pete knows this as well. Truthfully, one of the most important positions in our department, street-level supervisor, and I can speak from experience, and I know I've got Willie here too, who is a sergeant, is probably the one you take most pride in attaining in our department. Joshua has worked extremely hard for this. Since January, we've been challenged in a lot of the roles he's taken on, and as you can see, just from his work history, he may have started in 2021, but anytime we've had something that needed to be done, he stepped up and done it. The school resource officer performed that job excellent. We, Councilor Holden and I were talking about, before the meeting, about the incident where we had a possible active shooter, dealt with it within seconds. Now he's the defensive tactics instructor, he's a part of our emergency response team, drug task force member, firearms instructor. In addition to all this, I've been really impressed with just the way he handles the day-to-days and his strong ethical background. Again, one of the most critical things with a sergeant is you're trying to instill beliefs in your patrol officers and those you work with, and we as administration rely on the sergeants to do all that, and I'm very, very excited with his potential, where he's going to go in our department. I'm assuming you all know Joshua, he's in back here, but if you don't, he's Josh, you're going to stand up and just you've probably all seen him anyway, but excellent employee, one of the best officers we have in our department, is going to be a fantastic supervisor. So I just wanted to introduce you guys and tell you how excited I am for him.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, well, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion for the promotion.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilor Kayler. Any discussion?
Just that I think Joshua will do an excellent job. Started out in jail, but one thing, he's always been very good. He's very good with people and can use his communication skills that to avoid situations.
He started out in jail?
Well, it kind of feels like that sometimes, yes, yeah. Don't get me started. I was going to say already, no, but I was going to keep that to myself, but I know. But, but no, I think he'll do an excellent job.
And I'd like to thank him for the work he did at the school when there was a possibility of an active shooter. As a former school board member, the importance of taking care of the future of this country. You did a fantastic job, and I appreciate that. Congratulations.
All right. If you don't know, right now, there's the biggest smile I've ever seen on your face right now. All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, now I feel bad. Brad Hagan isn't going to get the same. All right, next, we have a a letter of retirement from Brad Hagan, equipment officer, effective August second, and move the vacancy to the Public Works Committee to discussion and consideration. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that letter and to move the vacancy to the Public Works Committee.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have approve the access gate operator system and the perimeter fence quotes for the lay-down yard project as presented. Chair would entertain a motion to
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. We have a couple of quotes here. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the low quote, which is the fifteen thousand, is that correct? Ted, do you want to come forward and just give us a quick rundown?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first quote in front of you is for the gate operating system, so it'll be an automatic gate that's got a fob and security on it, so, and then the perimeter fence is a separate quote. Because a lot of the fence companies don't dabble in the the gate side of it, especially with the automatic opener.
Did we receive multiple quotes or?
No, actually, we only received one quote back.
Okay.
Yep.
But we did, we did go out for a
Yep, we sent to several vendors. We're actually finding that on several smaller projects. We put the quote out for concrete and sent it to four or five and only got one back. So that's, but yes, we are definitely sending them out to more than one vendor, more than one contractor as per statute, yep.
All right, so the chair would entertain a motion to accept both quotes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? So is there two quotes here then, is that?
Well, there's one quote for the gate and one Yep.
So the fence is forty?
Yep.
And the gate is fifteen?
Mm-hmm. And that is right in line with what our engineer's estimate was. So I mean, if it was astronomically high, we wouldn't entertain it, but.
Do you have a follow-up question on that?
Nope.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Thank you, Ted.
Thanks.
Consider recommendation from the planning commission to add a resolution of conditional use permit for storage and meeting purposes to the International Falls Recreation Hockey. Kelly, do you want to come forward and just talk about that?
Mayor and Council, what, this was a part of possibilities that would be done at Cary Park. Rec Hockey has a building that we have our compressors in at Cary Park in the backside. They've used that for storage for quite a few years, with the potential possibility of the expansion to the building and and/or if they do anything with changing over to an ammonia system, the city's going to require that that entire building to utilize it for what it is. So Rec Hockey is looking to move forward with another project, which is property that's adjacent to to the park, which you can see it's on the west, the southwest side of the building. It's property they required, and they looked at building, a similar building what they have to use for storage plus meeting purposes on that backside. We held the meeting. We did have one neighborhood person that was there to speak a little bit. They had no opposition to it. They were just concerned about the activity, and as long as we accessed from the backside of the building, like through the alley, they had no issues. So I think it's a good move for them. It'll it'll be something that could come into play with whole Cary Park project or expansions or anything in the future. I mean, I think it's a plus.
So this is just these two?
It's those two lots. I apologize, I didn't bring my map with me. They do have two fifty-four lots there, so they have plenty of room to what they
Eighty and eighty-one?
Uh, yes, eighty and eighty-one.
Okay.
And it'd just be a good addition. It gives us a little more room at the park than to, something that'll help them and help us at the same time.
And then, because it's not city property, this wouldn't be part of Cary Park. This would just be their own their own gig.
This will remain a residential property. It's a conditional use that fits under under the conditions of the residential area, and that's what it could be used for.
Okay.
Works out good that it's hooked up to it.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions for Kelly on that, please?
Kelly, can you also talk on on these conditional uses, if they're approved, how they're recorded and the ownership, if it ever changes, what happens to this conditional use permit?
Okay, what happens with this is it gets recorded. It's recorded at the courthouse as a conditional use on the property. If Falls Rec Hockey ever ended up deciding that they were going to sell the property, the conditional use is lifted. It goes back to residential standards of what it is. So it's something that should stay there, you know, as long as Rec Hockey is in existence. I'm sure they're going to keep it, but if they decided they had to sell it for some reason, then this conditional use would get lifted, and it would be put back into the residential status of that area.
Is there a fee for filing that?
Forty-six dollar fee, yes.
Okay, and and I'm not throwing anyone under the bus when I ask this question. That historically hadn't happened, correct? We were just holding on to them in the building?
No, to be honest with you, they kind of created a lot of confusion over the years. They weren't recorded at the courthouse for a conditional use when we were doing this. They were stored in the file cabinets, which are in my office, so people claim that they have a conditional use for something. I have to dig. If you can't produce it, they don't have one.
Right.
And and we need to record that they have that purpose, and by doing it in this manner, by recording it and saying that if it gets sold and lifted, it's a good thing, because if you have, say, a welding shop in a residential area that got approved, it was there for fifty years ago, and all of a sudden somebody decided they were going to do it again, but the houses have changed, they have to come back to us to ask us. It's a, it's a good fashion.
I, I, I think it's a great thing, because when I first got into my office downstairs, I found old conditional use permits from the eighties, so.
If anybody wants to come and help someday, I've got boxes of those.
No, I think that's fantastic. I think it's a great way to go about it. All right, so we will need a motion and a second to approve that recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero.
Thank you.
Kelly. Next, we have a resolution for application to have off-site gambling for Rainier Recreation. They're going to have a raffle to be held at the Falls High Gymnasium on October fourteenth, 2024. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Wagner. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Any other business to come before the council? All right, we'll go down to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. Start with the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Just an update that myself and Councilor Kayler were down at the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference in St. Cloud, Wake Park, St. Joseph area last week for a day and a half, two days, and thank you for allowing us to go. It was very beneficial. We heard from EMS RB, how those things are changing down there, what we can expect a little bit, other legislators, a lot of, some talk on housing, trying to understand, you know, everybody has impact on housing and what they're hoping to do the next session. Very beneficial, and, you know, they're there to help us, so connected with some other folks in regards to annexation as well. So as we move forward with talking airport property, that could be a great resource also. So just that was a short update on that travels last week.
Perfect. City attorneys out, department heads, anybody have anything to bring forward? Really quick for the administrator, do we have, and I know I asked you earlier today, but just for the knowledge of the council, an update on the ban shell on timing or anything?
I'm going to have Jason Fisher, our engineer, step up and give a brief update on what, because I just asked him the same question, so give us a brief update on where we're at.
It was?
Yes, in talking with the contractor, the way we have to demo it now is we're going to be putting it into containers, dumpsters to haul away, and so they're trying to update the schedule so they can get it all hauled away by the end of next week, or not next week, the week after, but they are concerned, they don't want them in dumpsters during the Bass Tournament, so if they can't get it in the dumpster, get the dumpsters hauled by then, they're going to be pushing it back until after that, so.
So before July third? Thank you.
Get the pointing.
All right, in your packet, you have the police monthly report, reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Anybody have anything?
Just that I went with the city minister to the conference. Like she said, it was good and educational, learned some stuff, and one thing I learned is this, in the House and in the Senate, yes, everybody realizes there's a housing issue, but you could see there's a slight despair, despair, see of what how to fix the problem.
What about, what about your event on Friday night?
Yeah. Hey, don't you have an event coming up?
I don't have an event coming up on Friday. Well, I did, yes, I met some gentlemen from Ithaca County on their own. They came together and one was a police officer, one a teacher, and one a doctor, and one ran a marathon on the way here, one biked 125 miles, and another bike, or rollerbladed 98 miles, and I met them at the Cobblestone Inn, welcomed them to town, and they raised money for all different charities in the Ithaca County area, and what, and totally from the West End, Ithaca County a lot of, because one was from Grand Rapids, one from Coaslet, and one from Deer River. So, and they, and then they turned around the next day, and we're going to do the same thing. Yeah, but they had a good trip up here because they were delayed a few hours, not so much from the running and biking, but from stopping along the way, and apparently there was a big group out at the Junction Bar and Restaurant that greeted them and stuff, so they're happy. There are a few of us out there at the Cobblestone, and they were just doing this, decided to raise some money, so it was really good. I told them, I suppose we can take a picture and put our purple and orange differences aside for the, for good, for a good cause, so.
Thank you. And on July eighteenth, I got a phone call from the International Peace Run, and we had folks that were running all over the United States, Mexico, and Canada, and they were coming to International Falls, and then they were going to run up through Canada, and it was one of the more interesting things that I've ever experienced as mayor. These folks were from New Zealand, they were from Italy, all over, all over the world, and they were running, and they taught me that our international bridge was dedicated in 1991 by Mayor Jack Murray as the international bridge. The She-Chimoy Peace Bridge is the dedication on our bridge, and this peace run is in memory of this this gentleman that was promoting peace, and ninety, in 1991, they dedicated our international bridge to this man who was promoting peace, and they came up here on a run to see that, that plaque that's there. I put the information on my social media page, the Mayor Harley Droba, the information is up there, along with a picture of the plaque that is on the bridge from Mayor Murray back in 1991, and it was an educational piece of something in our community that I didn't know anything about. So it was, it was a really great moment of meeting some folks from outside the area, and it was really interesting, just like the group of people that that you had, just promoting a cause by doing physical activity. Wonderful.
One more thing, and I did meet last Tuesday, they had an open house about the construction of the new port entry headquarters that the few people attended, about thirty or so that morning, and I don't know about night, but just went over where they're at, the plan, sounds like hopefully be, the design will be done next fall, and I believe, and then construction in 2026 start, but they're doing the best they can to alleviate the concerns, but that's where it's going, unless they decide not to build it, but they're, they're looking out possibly around about when they're, you're leaving the port to help direct traffic, to leave some of the concerns, but they're just giving information to the public, then that and other meeting. That night was interesting and informational.
Perfect. Anybody else have anything to bring forward? All right, we'll go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to bring forward? No, I'm concerned. No, we're good. All right, correspondence, the Kooching Board of Commissioners, meeting minutes are in your packet, along with public notice for the international budget, International Budget and Finance Committee for the 2025 budget process, and budget process, and, um, the Voyagers National Park's annual star, star party is August ninth and tenth. Our next council meeting will be on August nineteenth. This meeting is adjourned.